Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget and Work Session on Thursday, May 13, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Public participation in this meeting is encouraged and can be done live, or you can watch it live on Channel 4, or go to LHCaz.gov/tv. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3 on the agenda is roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
I am here today.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kalshahe.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and item 4 is the public hearing, a presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff on the budget for fiscal year 2020-21, year-end estimates, the fiscal year 2021-22 annual budget, and the five-year capital improvement plan. Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want to say anything to start us off?
I'm sure if I can, Ms. Olson, just give it to you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council. This is our third work session with review of the budget. Some big decisions are made through this budget process, as we all know. This is a process that happens throughout the year. So as soon as we finish with this work session, the tentative budget will come before council here in June, and final budget shortly after that. And we'll continue to listen to our residents and continue to try to get a better understanding of what we can do with the city's resources to better our communities. This approach this year was certainly much different than last year, and different than other budgets in recent memory for Lake Havasu City. As recall, last year, we were here talking about different scenarios, and we didn't quite know what to do because we were going to either see some significant losses in revenues for the city and resources for the city, or an increase in resources for the city, pending how the pandemic unfolded and how that impacted our local economy and our local businesses. This year, we're now in a situation where the last several months, we've seen a large increase in tourism. We've seen a lot of our local businesses achieve success in terms of businesses and business generation and profits that are occurring there. So our businesses are doing well. Tourism is doing well, and that's reflective of Lake Havasu City and our ability to look at some solutions within the budget that address issues the city has been facing for several years. We're looking at this year, some new positions within the budget that some will include an offset, so a reduction elsewhere to help identify the funding for a new position. Some of that is tied to grants. Some of that is offset by reduction or removal of part-time positions. And there's some other caveats that Ms. Olson can explain. But that's important because we need some, these positions are necessary because we have bottlenecks within the organizations. We have situations where workflow is slowed because we don't have the necessary positions and people within the organization to help smooth the delivery of services to our residents. So that's the keen eye that was placed on identifying which positions should be recommended for council consideration. You'll see in here, too, that we have a keen eye towards facility maintenance. And we have some aging facilities within the city, some city-owned properties, city-owned buildings. And it's important that we invest within our current facilities. We want our facilities to last longer. So if we address them now with some necessary maintenance and upkeep that it takes, then that extends the life of our facilities, and it is a better investment for the city in the long term. So those are some of the highlights with the budget. I'm not going to steal all of Ms. Olson's thunder. She and Angie Bacon have done a really good job with the budget, so I will turn it over to her. And from what I understand, there is a small video that we like to kick off the work session with, and a kind of reminder for us all, and some information for the public as well on enterprise funds.
Ms. Olson.
What is an enterprise fund? The city has many funds that are used to track the costs of providing specific services to our residents. The most commonly known fund is the general fund. This fund is used to track and pay for services such as police, fire, parks, courts, building, and the many necessary support services such as HR, IT, finance, code enforcement, and other essential city services. Enterprise funds are different than the general fund. Enterprise funds are used to account for operations, including debt service, which are funded and operated similarly to private business, and are considered or proposed to be self-sufficient. User fees are established and revised to ensure that revenues are adequate to meet expenditures. What does that mean? Enterprise funds are used for services a city provides that are primarily supported by user fees. Lake Havasu City currently has four city services or operations that qualify as enterprise funds. They are water, wastewater, refuse, and airport. Citizens pay fees directly and indirectly to the city to use these services. Fees associated with each service go directly to the enterprise fund for that service. For example, the city makes sure that citizens of Lake Havasu City have clean, running water available in their homes. There is a cost to provide that service. That cost includes city staff labor, equipment materials, et cetera. We, as citizens, receive a utility bill. When we pay that utility bill, that money goes towards the enterprise funds, created for the purposes of which are included in that utility bill. Funds within an enterprise fund must be used exclusively to pay for costs associated with that service. Money from one enterprise fund cannot be used to pay for other services, even other enterprise fund services. It is essentially a not-for-profit means of providing services to our residents. The money collected for the use of the service is used to provide that same service. Enterprise funds are only utilized for the four services mentioned earlier. Other city services, such as street repair and maintenance, are supported by taxes paid by citizens. Those services are also restricted to the purposes for which the tax was collected. We hope this provides you with a better understanding of what an enterprise fund is, and why they are needed to provide quality services to our residents at a cost that is not otherwise inflated. If you would like more information about the city's budget, including enterprise funds, please visit www.lhcaz.gov.
Now, we'll start the quiz. All right. Good morning, everyone. Going to start the process today. We're kind of heading toward the finish line here. Today, we were going to review the operating budget, look at revenue and expenditure projections, and the overall departmental budgets. You should have a bound copy of the materials that's been delivered to each of you, and it's been provided online as well. And then, again, the reminder that we will adopt the tentative budget on June 8, and the final budget on June 22. So if we make any changes here today, or between now and the tentative budget, we'll make sure that that's highlighted at that tentative budget meeting, budget adoption meeting. So again, we'll do a little quick budget overview. We'll look at the departmental budgets, and then we'll take questions at the end. This year's operating budget includes about, the personnel increases of about 9.6% over the prior budget. And that's largely due, about 6.1% of that is the implementation, full-year implementation of the position analysis that occurred back in October. That was the implementation date, so we had a partial year for the current year that we're in. And then it also includes the step increases that were part of that adopted position analysis implementation as well. We are looking at, hopefully, no more than just a 1.5% increase in our healthcare costs. So that has been factored in there. And typically, we also experience about 2% for vacancy factor. So we have put that savings in the budget as well, so that when we have turnover, or in the form of retirements or resignations, then we at least are capturing part of that savings upfront. We've also included the pension costs associated with all the personnel. We have the Arizona State Retirement System, which is all general employees or non-public safety. There is a slight rate increase for that that has been reflected in these numbers. And then our public safety personnel retirement system for police and fire also has increases. These are a little more substantial, and it varies by which tier the employees happen to be in. So we've listed the different tiers there. So it's definitely a significant increase, but it has been reflected in the budget numbers. As Mr. Knutson mentioned earlier, we do have some new full-time positions. These are the ones in the general fund, the first ones listed. Overall, there are 22. 19 of them are in the general fund. They are listed here in the various departments. One thing we did not list, because it's a part-time position that was added, we are including a part-time lobby receptionist for City Hall, since that has been very informative and helpful for the public as they enter City Hall. So we're going to try and fund that at least on a part-time basis. And then, again, some of the positions are paid for by savings, such as the customer service technicians on the admin services. Those are related to the meter-reading function, and we are converting some part-time personnel into full-time personnel. So there's a funding source for most of those. There's a little bit that's additional funding, but it's very minor. And then for, I guess I should go back. I do want to mention, for the fire department, those five firefighter paramedics, those are dependent or contingent upon getting the safer grant. For enterprise and grant funds, there are three additional positions. The transit one you're aware of, you've seen that in some of the transit presentations, I believe, and then field supervisor and a technician, all in public works. On the services and supplies side, we have about an $8.4 million increase over the prior budget. It's hard to really make an apples-and-apples comparison, because as was mentioned earlier, there were so many factors in last year's budget, many of which remained in this year's budget, or even were similar, but for new reasons, different federal plans that we're trying to accommodate for, even though we don't really have a good understanding of what those dollars could be spent on at this point, the new dollars. So of the services and supplies and capital budgets, the majority is in the general fund, 6.3 million. And then Water Fund and Wastewater Fund, those are enterprise funds. Those are the primary funding increases. Just as a highlight, we do have some supplemental items that were approved. Supplemental items are those items that are over and above the base budget from the prior year. So in the area of police training and supplies and equipment, there's an increase of about $143,000. A portion of those funds are coming from donations and grants or other restricted revenue accounts that are very specific to the police department. It also, this budget includes four additional patrol vehicles, and it also includes some additional apparatus for the fire department. And then, just a reminder again, these numbers don't include CIP. In Parks and Recreation, we've added almost $200,000 for vehicles and equipment. For Information Technology, which resides in admin services, we're looking at about $700,000 in additional items. These items typically affect all of the departments. IT is a service department that helps all of the other departments, so all the departments will benefit from the improvements that are being made in IT within this budget. And then, again, on the operations side, Water Fund is increasing by about $1.5 million, and Wastewater by about $1.9 million. In the category of other revenues and expenditures that are kind of outside the typical personnel and supplies and services budget, we do have a total for all funds in contingency about a little over $2.6 million. This is funding that's included so that we have the ability to address any critical items or emergency items that come up during the year that must be taken care of. That way, we have at least a funding source, and those funds typically have to, they all have to receive city manager approval. And of course, if it exceeds $50,000, it comes to council for a specific approval as well. Of that $2.6 million, there's about $1 million of that in the general fund contingency. And then additional potential revenues and expenditures, we have included $6.5 million in the general fund for the anticipated funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. That has not been designated toward anything specifically, because we are still not clear, even with the guidance received recently from Treasury, on what items are eligible for expenditure. So that's still being reviewed, not only by us, but by staff all across the nation, in cities and towns and states, just trying to make sure that we are spending it on eligible projects or items. $5 million in additional revenue potential in the form of grants and donations. That way, if we do receive additional grants or additional donations that we were not aware of this year, at the time we put together the budget, we will have the ability to actually spend it. If we don't receive it, we don't spend it. We have placed in the budget $1 million for deferred facility maintenance. As we've discussed in prior meetings, we do have quite a deferred maintenance issue. There are a lot of facilities and equipment that is beyond where it normally would have been replaced or repaired. So we've included a million for those items that kind of come up during the year that we didn't identify as an emergency or an immediate need right now that we'll be able to address should they arise. And then, $3 million resides in the Highway User Revenue Fund fund balance. So we have included a budget of $3 million of that fund balance to be spent on street-related items. So that money will be available. And then, just a reminder that the property tax rate is remaining the same. There is no rate increase. With assessed valuation increases, we would generate an additional $263,000 for the entire year. So there is additional funding there, but it's not in the form of a rate increase. And now, we'll take a look at just the totals of the departments' budgets. And I won't read through all of these. Just, this is just an overview. Within your booklets that were provided to you, you will see more detail associated with each of those departmental budgets. You'll see the line items. And one thing that we try to add during each budget process, even if you just look at the first budget in your booklet back under the Department Budget tab, whenever we see a variance between the prior budget and the current budget, we try to list those so that it's, everyone who's looking at these numbers will have an idea of why some numbers are changing at what appear to be more than just a nominal level. So we have a budget variance box at the bottom of each of those, and that explains within each category why you might see a bigger difference between budget years for those items. So that should, we're hoping that's helpful in seeing why some of the numbers are changing, most of which will be related to prior-year Plan B funding. So the funding that was added this year was really just one-time funding for the Plan B items. So those things came back out of the budget. So some will go up, some will go down from year to year, but hopefully that will explain it. And then we go through the remainder of the budgets departmentally. And this includes all funds, the departmental budgets within all funds, try to speak today. And then, again, as we mentioned earlier, we're getting toward the end of this process. On June 8, at the council's regular meeting, we will have the adoption of the five-year CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and the adoption of the tentative budget. The adoption of the tentative budget does set the maximum budget for the city. So no matter how it might change between the tentative and the final budget adoption, the final budget cannot be higher than the tentative budget. And then the Truth and Taxation Hearing and the final budget adoption would then occur on June 22, with the property tax levies being adopted by council on July 13. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions or provide additional information.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Olson. Comments, questions from members of the council? This could be the easiest budget session so far.
I guess I'll jump on in. I just want to thank the staff, city manager Jill and your team. Looks great. We had definitely a good year last year revenue-wise, and I know it doesn't pertain to this as much at the moment. We're still, of course, waiting to see with the American Rescue Plan how that comes together. You know, we talked about it, when we were talking about maybe raising taxes or not at previous meetings, that, you know, we won a lottery ticket, and now we're realizing all the fine print that comes with that lottery ticket. So hopefully, as we find out more about that, hopefully, it's not as strict. But luckily, it was meant, my understanding, was meant to bail out some of the cities that had rough years, and we had a very good year. So just want to thank you guys for the time, and hopefully, we find out more about that, and it's not as restrictive as it could be. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The guidance that was released this week so far is it's very restrictive. And so we initially were told, and the intent was, when speaking to our federal delegation, that they wanted it to be open and able to be used as the citizens deemed necessary within their communities. Doesn't look like that at all, but we'll know more as cities and towns kind of pick up from falling off their chair when they hear credit, and now talking with Treasury to see, you know, what is the intention here. This is completely different than what we initially were told when they were going through the legislative process. So we'll see. But in the coming weeks, we should know more info.
But why would they tell us something like that that we wanted to hear in the beginning? I don't understand why they would.
That was the intention from our elected officials back in DC.
Shocking, shocking.
Yes. Now that the guidance is coming out, it's very restrictive, unfortunately. So any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, so much of our decision-making is going to stem from our projections of revenues going forward and stuff like that. Jill, can you kind of take me through how you forecasted the sales? And were you conservative with your approach, or aggressive, or you know what I mean?
In particular with sales tax.
How do you tell the future, in other words? Where's your crystal ball?
Where's my secret crystal ball? We took a look at several prior years to take a look at what the trends have been, keeping in mind that sometimes there are anomalies in each of those years that we have to adjust for. So we did that again. As for projecting this year's revenues in particular, we went back a couple of years, looked at the trends, looked at what we thought the numbers would be had there not been a pandemic, still associating growth during that period, but perhaps maybe at a different level. And we adjusted our FY '22 and forward projections on what that number was. So we've tried to kind of take into account the, some of the anomalies of the pandemic that we had on our community, which was actually very different for us than it was for many other communities, since we didn't have huge downturns in our or losses of revenue. So we tried to adjust for that. We were moderately conservative, I would say. We didn't get aggressive at all, but we're certain, I would say we're less conservative than we normally would be. We definitely took into account that we had an improvement in the prior year, and we wanted, we know a portion of that will likely continue. So it's been included that way.
You are projecting that we're going to, that we're, I don't, at least in like sales tax, I don't see any bit of a downturn at all. You are projecting steady growth every single year?
Yes, of about 3%.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
I'm back. Speaking of broadband infrastructure, that's the direction I was going. In the budget moving forward, and I know we spoke about it before, just want to make sure that we consider right-away infrastructure for opening services up to many providers to improve our broadband services for our community. Yesterday, I launched another plan that is allowing, what is it, $3.8 billion they're spending on making sure every child has internet or the one from the family has internet, which is just going to put another burden on our already horrible internet service provider situations here in town. So in the budget, I just would really like to see, I know we're going to have a meeting here coming up. We've been working with Broadband USA, working with wire-free free consulting efforts to assist us to turn the city around here. Also, on that Main Street Road project, trying to turn that into a smart street, along with Down Below by Swanson, where all these bars and restaurants are that are also bringing in tons of revenues for us. I really want to see their streets looking good, and possibly considering finishing the Main Street sign that's been sitting there half-done for gosh knows how long. So again, affluent water is important to me, and those are my concerns for the budget as well, along with great job, staff, on everything you've done so far. It's been really, really informative. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Olson, do you want to talk a little bit about the legislative offset in some subsequent years, and what that is in your financial projections?
Yes. The legislature has, there's a possibility that we're going to have an impact to our revenues in a negative manner for our state's shared revenues through the tax credit that will be given by the state. When the state gives that tax credit, it then reflects in the amount that they transfer out to the cities. And so there's a potential over the next 10 years that we would lose like over $10 million. So we have, it won't start affecting us until FY '24. But in our five-year projections for FY '24, we have included some of the legislative impacts. There's a ramping up, so to speak, the first two years, it's smaller dollar amounts for us. And then the larger amounts, I think in year three or four, then stay larger, and it's about 2.2 million, you know, each year that we lose as a result of that legislative act.
Yeah, so this is contingent on the current budget that the legislature's working on right now with the cuts to the state income tax. There's been a longstanding policy since the '70s that cities and towns get their portion of those income taxes so they can provide the services to their citizens based on those income taxes. And so with this change, or a flat tax, is some of the discussion that's happening down in Phoenix, could have some negative impacts on us going into the future. I've spoke with our delegation, Representative Gina Cobb, who is on the Appropriations Chair, and she assures me there's some sort of fund in fiscal year '24 that can help support cities and towns if this does not come together. But again, this is, it moves so fast to the legislature, especially during budget season. So as soon as they have enough votes, they literally take it to the floor and vote on it. And so that was yesterday's conversation. And so it probably has changed since then. But it's just something to be mindful of. You know, we're still in a good financial position. Our revenue forecasts are looking good for the five-year outlook. Our revenue forecasts are, are looking good for, for the five-year outlook as Ms. Olson and her team shared with us about a month or two ago. But I think it's just important to understand some of the future things that, that may come our way as we address, you know, kind of long-term financial strategy.
So just to clarify, more elected officials telling us not to worry, everything will be okay in the future?
Yeah, you're getting a good theme here. So the ones that provide.
I feel warm and fuzzy about that, so.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, the ones that provide the services directly to, to our citizens, I keep getting pushed and pushed and we're, we're the ones that have, you know, balanced budgets and, and meet the priorities of, of our residents, so.
Well, they're saying that they're going to help us with those funds for gambling and marijuana, you know, syntax. That's where we get it all, right?
Yeah, I, I've heard that argument before too. We'll, we'll see. Any other questions, comments, or thoughts on the budget? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, to the staff, the entire staff, thank you. For years, this is my fifth budget now and it's always do more with less, do more with less, do more with less. And you always have, and we definitely appreciate that. This year, it wasn't do more with less, it's do the same with maybe a little bit more. But we, there is some, some relief, but we're not going to be going hog wild and, you know, spending money like drunken sailors because, and no offense to any sailors that are in the room, but we're not going to go crazy because we really don't know what the future holds, but we do have a little bit of breathing room. But in looking at your budgets for your departments, you've still been very conservative when it comes to that and, and not asking for every pie in the sky. And we appreciate that. It's, it's still, you know, need versus want. And I can tell by looking at your budgets that it's, you're still asking for just what you need, not just the stuff that you want. And it's, all the stuff that you're asking for is, is to make life better for the people of like Havasu City and to do your jobs the best that you can. And we appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this. When people look at the budget, sometimes they look at just numbers. And if you look just at numbers, it looks like, wow, your budget's really going up this year as compared to last year. But I would caution everybody to remember that we went really, really conservative last year. So had we budgeted normally, it wouldn't be as big of a, an increase. So, and even then, when you look at what we budgeted and what was actually spent, you didn't exceed the budget. You still came in under budget and it was a very conservative budget. And every year that I've been up here, you all still come in under budget and don't spend all the money that's been allocated to you. And so we really appreciate that. You know, we don't just sit up here, but we're all taxpayers as well. And the fact that, that you all are very cognizant of the money that's coming into your departments being tax dollars and that are coming from our residents, you're doing a great job. And we thoroughly appreciate it. And, and thank you, Jill, and to your staff for, for putting all these numbers together. I know you guys work very, very hard at what you do and try to give us the best information that you can, but you don't have that crystal ball. You know, sometimes we all wish that we did. So moving forward, I think things will be bright for the city. You know, we've been talking structural deficit and we're not going to have the money and we're not talking that way this year. And this is a good thing. So just keep on the path that you're on and, and thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. And you make us look good, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
I have one statement about the funding. I skimmed through the 150-page document that was sent out yesterday about this extra funds, CARES Act funds. And I am concerned, and I watched the video yesterday, I am slightly concerned that those funds are only going to go to cities and states that showed a drop in revenue. And I may not be completely accurate, I'm not telling on this. I just want us to look at it moving forward, that we potentially may not be in the category to be able to use those funds. And if anybody else could speak up on this or give me more information, if I'm incorrect, I would love it.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, you're correct. There might not be an opportunity for us to use them. As Ms. Olson told us earlier, we do have the money budgeted in, in there because if we do receive it, if it's not budgeted, we can't spend it. But right now, there is no projects identified for it, any reasons to, to spend it. All of that will come back to council for a different discussion. But the vehicle for us to be able to use those monies should they come is built into this, this budget plan that we have in front of us. But yeah, you are correct. It's, it's looking like it might be difficult to spend those dollars.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson, or maybe for the chief, if you want to talk about the fire vehicle replacement. I know this is just kind of the start of, of what that might look like. Again, just talking more long, long range?
Sure, I can start and then Chief Palafas, if you want to come up to the podium and, and, and add to the conversation. That'd be fantastic. But yeah, very excited to present a budget to the council that includes a plan moving forward for a replacement of our engines in, in the fire department. We don't have a plan in place prior to this, this budget. With Chief Palafas coming on board, he's taken a look at a lot of the department needs and how it impacts the fire department's ability to respond to emergency situations within, within the public. And he's presented a plan. The first year of the plan is a refurbish of an existing fire engine and the purchase or replacement of an, of a fire engine. And then the kind of the plan moving forward, tentatively now, we'll see how Jill's crystal ball unfolds. But we're talking about maybe every other year, doing something similar in terms of a replacement of one and then refurbish of, of another one. And I think, Chief, you're, I think the idea here is let's see how this refurbish of one of the engine goes. It's a, it's a cost savings compared to a replacement and purchase of a new engine. But it might be something that we can move forward with in the future at a, at a better use of the city's resources.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, I did set a five-year plan. Again, having that crystal ball is very interesting. And coming into this organization, I, I know I had some challenges, especially when you purchase five new rigs all at the same time. We could have went down that route, but it's just not fiscally responsible. So what I put together is to, very similar to what City Manager mentioned, is a plan of trying out for the first year is replacing, one of our trucks is, is over 20 years old. It's getting rid of the truck, replacing it with a new engine. And then going to the refurb program, which is half the cost of what it would cost for a new rig. So this is a test period for the first year. We've already started the process of at least spec-ing out, so I can actually get it to you as soon as possible because the build-out is roughly about 13 to 14 months now. So I'm already going to be a, a year behind. But it's really about just having that plan and seeing what happens, seeing what the economy does, seeing it with the revenues, is that we're going to try to space it out so I don't have to come for a group purchase ever again. So we can have it small incremental pieces. But the thing is, the cost of a rig is well over about 700,000. The cost of doing business has increased drastically in regards to materials. And it's nothing that I'm, I'm not telling you. It, it's, it's just the, the price of doing business too. And making sure that we have reliable rigs to respond to the community's needs. So, and also, you know, bringing onboard the, the ARVs that we currently have, those will be in service soon and start utilizing that. So I, I have a plan in place. It's just, this is the test period of investing into the fire department for reliable rigs. That's what brings the firefighter paramedics to the scene to take care of the customer. So I'm very optimistic, especially moving forward, and we'll see how this plan works out.
Yeah, great. Thank you for coming forward with the plan. Because as Mr. Knutson said, we did not have a plan before, before this budget session. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. All right, any other questions or comments from council? All right, well, I guess we're, we'll come to a close on some of the strategic hires or positions that we've talked about. Good work to Mr. Knutson and the staff for putting those together. It looks like an increase, but again, many of those are, are from grant funds and/or combining part-time positions into full-time positions, but really will increase the efficiency, which I know is a lot of the discussion that councils had at our planning session and our previous budget hearings. So great, great way to put that plan together. And thank you for, for putting all of these pieces together. The conversation, I've said it before, that we were having 13 or 14 months ago to, to today is completely different and it allows us to continue to offer, you know, the valuable services that we do to our citizens. And we couldn't do it without all of your work. So thank you to the team for, for all of that. And I look forward to coming back to, to the final adoption, or the tentative adoption in our next budget meeting. And with that, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Koch. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Hope to see you soon.